I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God in heaven, we come before you humbly asking for your guidance. We ask for your will to be done here. We ask that you will give us the wisdom to proceed forward, to help the city grow, Father God. We ask that you will be there in front of us and guide us through. In my name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Here.
Counselor Lawrence?
Here.
Counselor Segala?
Here.
Counselor Ellipar?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
A quorum is declared.
No modifications to the agenda. Consent agenda.
Will we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Can we approve the consent agenda? There's no discussion. Nita?
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellipar?
Aye.
Counselor Lawrence?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Proclamation, communications, and appointments. Nita, would you like to go first?
Sure. So, tonight, I would like to present Erin Bonnemeyer for her one year of service. Also want to introduce Erin as the new deputy clerk. So...
All right.
Many more to come.
Yes, definitely.
Rob?
Here.
You didn't see that happen. So, I actually have two awards tonight. We'll start with one year of service. Craig Clown, come on up. Craig's been with us for a year. He works in our utilities and does a fantastic job. I'm working on getting his certifications. Make a job.
Thank you, Craig.
Now, we have a gentleman that when I hired on, he was working in our wastewater plant. Did us a fantastic job on the wastewater plant, another certified operator. And then, to his detriment, he found out, or I found out, that he actually had some construction trades skills. The room you're sitting in is part of that. He also built the little breezeway out here where the employees come in. So, Bob Hope, would you stand? We're recognizing 10 years of service with Hope. He is currently my streets and parks supervisor. And since the newspaper isn't here, can I get the three of you to stand up here with counsel and get a picture? With counsel. With all of counsel. Come on, Gary. You're gorgeous. I'm the only one that breaks down. Want me to get a picture of Bob here? Rob? Oh, no. You want to...
Rob needs to be in the picture.
Oh.
And Nita.
Yeah. You lost.
It went away. I'll text it to you.
Okay.
This is real news, Bob.
Yeah.
I must have hit some wrong ones. I mean, those things were real.
So, Valley White National Health Center Week 2018 proclamation. Bear with me. Whereas for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. Whereas, as the county's largest primary care network, health centers are the healthcare home for 27 million Americans in over 10,000 communities across the nation. One in every 12 people in the United States gets their care in a community health center. Whereas, health centers are a critical element of the health system, often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities. Nationwide, health centers serve one in every six residential's...excuse me, six residents of rural areas. Whereas, health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, behavioral health, and pharmacy services, to meet the needs and challenges of their communities. Whereas, health centers are governed by patient majority boards, ensuring that the patients of each health center are engaged in their own healthcare decisions. Whereas, health centers are locally owned and operated small businesses that serve as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating $45.6 billion in economic impact in some of the country's most economically deprived communities. Whereas, health centers nationally employ more than 200,000 people, including physicians, dentists, nurse practitioners, and physician's assistants who work as part of multidisciplinary clinical teams designed to treat the whole patient. Whereas, the health center model is an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status. And in doing so, improves healthcare outcome and reduces healthcare system cost. Whereas, health centers reduce overall cost of caring by helping manage patients' chronic conditions, which keeps them out of costly or healthcare settings like hospital emergency rooms. Whereas, health centers are on the front lines of emerging healthcare crises, providing access to care for our nation's veterans, addressing the opioid epidemic, and responding to public health threats in the wake of natural disasters. Whereas, National Health Center Week is the opportunity to recognize America's nearly 1,400 health center organizations with over 10,400 service delivery sites, their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health centers opened their doors more than 50 years ago. Whereas, during National Healthcare Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and the future of America's healthcare system. Now, therefore, I Dale Becker, Mayor of City of Montevista, do hereby proclaim August 12th through the 18th, 2018, as National Healthcare Health Center Week. Encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting their local health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's health centers and the communities they serve. Mr. Logan?
My name's Kyle Logan. I am the owner of Logan &amp; Associates CPA Firm, the independent auditors for the City of Montevista, and I'm here tonight to present the results of the 2017 financial statement audit. And so, in your package, you receive two documents. One is the financial statements, the other document is what we refer to as the management letter. And so, I'll just kind of go through, give you an idea of the audit process, and hit on some highlights in the financial statements, and then finish off with the management letter. And so, when we perform the city's audits, we actually do it in two phases. We usually come out in December and do a lot of our preliminary testing there, and that's when we pick samples, samples of checks written, samples of payroll transactions, utility billing samples. And we go through and test those to make sure that they're...they've been properly authorized, the amounts being paid out, or they're supporting documentation for that, you know, for instance, and also payroll, that the pay rates being paid to employees are approved. And utility billings, for example, we also look at the rates being charged to utility customers to make sure that they are the rates that the city has put in place. And so, we go through that process. We also, because the city expended more than $750,000 in federal awards in 2017, we also do some preliminary testing of that. Now, primarily, that's your sewer plant expansion project that's been going on for a few years. So, there's certain compliance things as far as that we refer to as the single audit, and that is the last, near the last section in the financial statements. So, we do that at year end, and then, we can't...we come out normally mid-year. Well, this year, it was delayed a little bit, but then, that's when we come out and we really concentrate on the numbers in the document and testing them. You know, we send confirmation letters out to third parties, for instance, the banks, to make sure that the cash that's being reported in accounting system is what the banks say. And so, we also verify certain revenue streams, like from the state, from the county. And doing that, we also do some analytical procedures, testing balances that are reported in the different funds of the city. And so, once we've gone through all that process, then that gives us a comfort level in order to issue an opinion on the financial statements. And so, this document, the financial statements, all the numbers in this document, all the footnote disclosures in the document, they're responsibility of the city's management. Where the independent CPAs hired by you, the city council, to come in, audit those, and issue an opinion on those financial statements if they're fairly stated. And so, on that, in this document, following the table of contents is the independent auditors' report. And that is a two- to three-page document that talks about certain responsibilities of us as your auditors, the city's management, and then, in there, there's a section called the opinions paragraph. That's the most important paragraph in that three-page document. And so, for the year ended December 31st, 2017, the city received an unmodified opinion. Now, what that means in layman's terms, that's a clean opinion. So, that is the best that you can receive from an independent auditor, okay? What does that tell you as city council? That tells you that all the numbers in this document, all the footnote disclosures in this document are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for a municipality of your size, okay? That also tells you that the policies and procedures that have been put in place over the years are being followed, and also, they are in a condition that allows good financial reporting of the funds, okay? So, the financial statements are...there's about five sections to the financial statements. Of course, the first section is our independent auditors' report, then followed by the basic financial statements. And within the basic financial statements, there's what we call the government-wide financials, which are pages one and two, and that is on what we call a full accrual basis of accounting. And then, on pages three through nine, those are your fund financial statements. And that is what you are used to seeing when you receive reports throughout the year from the finance staff, okay? And so, in that, you have two types of funds, basically, governmental funds and your proprietary funds, which is your water and sewer operations, okay? And so, the governmental funds, of course, your primary fund there is your general fund. And that's primarily your operations of the city. That's where all the revenues related to that and related to the expenditures for the various departments throughout the city are reported and accounted for, okay? And so, you know, when we look at your governmental funds, just a couple highlights, the total assets, we had a slight decrease this year of about $430,000. Well, that's because last year, you guys had that airport project going on, that you received grant funding for that, and at the end of 2016, the city hadn't received all the monies for reimbursement from that. So, that kind of bumped your assets up last year. Well, that's now in cash, okay? And so, total liabilities also went down about $540,000. Once again, those were accounts payable, or amounts that were due at the end of the year, and again, it was related primarily to the airport project. So, but when we look at it overall, your fund balance, or your equity, increased about $174,000, which is about 14% over 2016. So, that means your...all your governmental funds, general fund included, generated a profit for the year. Now, some of the funds may have had some minor losses, but overall, we had an increase in fund balance. So, as an auditor, we always look at that. Do we see any trends or any issues there? So, for this year, it's good. So, the other thing, general fund, what we call unrestricted fund balance, so this is the funds that are available for the city to spend in the following year, that increased about 36% over last year. And so, you know, that's good. Then, when we look at the water and sewer fund, again, in there, we have the sewer plant expansion going on, okay? And so, your total assets increased about $400,000. Well, a lot of that is in capital, is in this sewer plant expansion project. So, that's a significant increase there. Your cash in that fund increased about $262,000, which was about 19% over the prior year. Liabilities decreased. Well, you have debt and loans in the water and sewer funds. You guys are paying that debt down. So, your liabilities are...which is always a good thing, to have your liabilities decreasing. And then, as far as your unrestricted equity, it increased about $892,000 over last year. And so, that's about 81%. And again, as I mentioned, the sewer plant expansion was a significant activity going on in those funds this past year. The other thing I look at is, is your net income from your operations of your water and sewer activities, are they in a positive state? And yes, they are. So, the water fund's operating income was $284,000. The sewer fund is $169,000. And so, what that tells you is that the rates that you're collecting from your customers is able to pay for the cost of these two funds, including depreciation, which is a non-cash item, on the infrastructure of the water and sewer systems. So, you know, that's good, because then that allows you to increase your equity so that if you do have to replace future water and sewer systems, you have that basically available for capital improvements, okay? Then, following the financial statements are the footnotes. Governmental accounting standards require certain disclosures to support the numbers in the financial statements, for instance, cash and investments, your capital assets, which are all your property and equipment, the debt, long-term debt, whether it's capital leases or the loans. And so, that's all required to be disclosed. Also included in there are the retirement plans that the city has. So, again, we go through and we audit the numbers in those documents and also the wording to make sure that it's properly stated for the accounting standards. And then, following the footnotes are basically your budgetary statements. So, every year in December, you guys adopt a budget for all the funds, and so, we...there's a state statute that says you're not supposed to overspend what you expect to spend. And so, we always look at that to make sure that every single fund is within line with the amount you guys expected, and we didn't have any issues with that, okay? Then, following the budget schedules are the single audit pages. And again, we look at your internal controls and your certain compliance with federal requirements over certain federal programs. And in your case, for 2017, we audited the expenditures related to the sewer plant expansion. And so, we did not have any issues there with that. I will say that last year, we had a compliance finding related to Davis...not Davis Bacon, but suspension in department, and so, we were able to satisfy ourselves this year based on what the city had changed, and so, we were able to eliminate that comment. So, that's always a good thing, okay? And so, and then, the very last two pages are what we refer to as a local highway finance report. This is a report that is actually filed online with the State Department of Transportation, and so, we were required to include that in the financial statements, okay? So, I know I've thrown a lot at you on the financial statements. Any questions before I move on? Everybody still with me? Okay. Okay, that's good. That's good. So, anyway, I'll briefly go over the management letter and then, and close up here. So, then, the management letter, this...our professional standards require us to communicate certain things to you, the board, or the governing council that...of the city. And so, that's what this letter does. So, it talks about our responsibility under our auditing standards. We also talk about whether there's, you know, significant changes in accounting policies, issues with while performing the audit, and, you know, we didn't have any issues there. We didn't have any changes in accounting policies. You know, the audit adjustments that we made were minor. So, again, these are all things that may occur, but don't have any effect on our opinion that we issue in the financial statements. And then, on the last page, we talk about, we call it other information, and that's where we, you know, when our testing, another thing we look at are credit card transactions. And so, we make sure that all the credit card charges on the monthly statements have supporting invoices and that they're properly approved. And so, over...this is our third year of performing the city's audit, and so, we've issued this comment the past two years. I've seen improvements each year, and this year was even better for 2017. But there's still some instances of missing receipts, some instances of lack of documentation of approvals. The approvals may have been there, but when we don't see that being noted anywhere. So, again, when we look at this stuff and we came up with these, then we take another step and we say, okay, are these expenses actual proper expenses for the city? We didn't have any issues with what was being charged, okay? So, that's one thing, you know, we've talked with staff here at the city and for them to take a look at and kind of tighten that up. Again, it's not significant enough that it caused us to change our opinions on the financials. And then, the other item, accounts receivable court. And I know this has been something over the last few years, that there's been questions about, you know, can we get a good number? Well, this year, the court clerk and the finance staff, they really dug into and took a look at this, at these receivables and saying, you know, spent a lot of time. And as a result, they were able to make some adjustments to these receivables that really gave us a comfort level, that they were fairly stated. And the one thing in going through this and talking with city staff is that there's, you know, there's really no policy in place for uncollectible accounts, so for bad accounts. And so, you know, I'm not saying you have to, but when I say something like this, you know, the city's perhaps missing out on some money, and maybe has over the years, but again, it's up to the city if you guys want to look into perhaps establishing some type of collection policy and maybe weighing the cost benefit of perhaps putting in some type of collection policy. And I know I have several other clients that they do this, and it's not just with their accounts receivable, it's kind of across the board of all their funds, including utilities and things like that. So, again, that's why I put this comment in here, just kind of say, hey, maybe you guys want to think about that. And then, as an ongoing basis, because there was so much time spent to really analyze these court receivables, consistently review that. And that way, you know, it doesn't get to a point where it's, you know, it's unknown. So, and then, finally, in closing, you know, when I do the audits, I feel like I have the easy part. City staff has a hard part, you know, and this year, Debbie and Jennifer and Forrest and Rob, I want to thank them and Nita for all their help, because they have the hard part of hunting down things for us and answering questions that sometimes are difficult because it's events that may have happened 18 months ago. So, I really appreciate their help, because it really does make our audit process go efficient. And that's all I have. So, any questions? I'll tell you, if you don't have any questions now, but if you come up with something later, please let one of the staff know, they can get ahold of me, and I'll be happy to find out an answer for you. Okay?
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's just good to have a good report. It's good. Appreciate your work.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Mr. Wilkins?
Thank you, Mayor Becker. It's great to Kevin Wilkins, Soundless Valley Council's government. It's great to be able to come up after a positive audit. I am here tonight, again, to implore you to come forward with your...and approve your COG dues for 2018. It's really important to us, and it's important to the COG really, to have the...one of the largest cities in the region as part of our membership in accordance to the 2011 COG memorandum of understanding that all of the governmental entities in the county sign. In past appearances, when talking about the COG, it's confusing as to what's the Development Resources Group and what's the COG, because there's six of us on staff, we wear a lot of hats, we do a lot of things, so...and this comes up a lot with other members. So, I've taken the liberty, and it has not yet been ratified by either the DRG Board or the COG Board, but you're the first guinea pigs on my new organizational chart, showing exactly what you get under your COG. Before, we said that the direct benefit is the dolominy grants. Now, those are only exclusively to COG members. And because we overlap in so many areas between DRG and COG, and the COG dues actually support some of the unfunded activities of the organization, such as community technical assistance, work on those local grants, some representation to regional and state entities such as Action 22, Office of Economic Development and International Trade, Department of Local Affairs, and some of those other entities as it relates to depending on which area of the organization you're looking at. Things that would fall in...one of the things that's come up here recently that is said to be one of the largest economic development incentives for rural areas since the Homestead Act is the Opportunity Zone tax proposal. It's in the 2018 tax law. The City of Montevista is in an enter...is in an opportunity zone. It's a federal opportunity zone. The COG went to bat on behalf of the valley. It was a gubernatorial designation to get census tracts designated as opportunities zones. The COG went to bat on behalf of the valley. It was a gubernatorial designation to get census tracts designated as opportunities It was a gubernatorial designation to get census tracts designated as opportunity zones. We were allowed to, we were supposed to pick 25% of eligible census tracts. Through our efforts in working with the Office of Economic Development and the governor's office, we got 50% of our census, of our qualified census tract in the San Luis Valley approved for opportunity zone tax credits. And we're, and your economic developers currently working with a confidential industry that we have had conversations into the utilization of that tax credit. So it's, it may be working already. As the president says, we'll see. But if anybody's got any questions, I don't want to take up more of your time. I know you just, you just got through the audit presentation. I don't want to overshadow that good news. But if you would, please consider approval of your 2018 COG dues, we would much appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
What are our COG dues?
$6,500.
Is that yearly, Forrest?
Pardon me?
Is that yearly?
Yes, sir.
And it's been ongoing for how long?
Well, since 2011, I believe. And that was in 6,500?
6,500. Do we need to approve that now, Forrest, or?
If you'd like to.
The answer you're looking for?
Yeah, you can because it's scheduled presentation. If you want to, do it now. That's at the council's pleasure.
Have you been doing that since 2011?
Yes, sir.
I moved that we approved the dues for 2018. I don't know why we wouldn't.
And I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the dues for the 2018 COG dues for $6,500. Is there any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Sella?
Aye.
Counselor Alathart?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Ms. Taries?
We spent all that money on for a good audit. Mr. Douglas?
All right, Mayor Becker, board. Okay, so it's that time. I was supposed to give you guys an update on things and how things are going. So a couple of things that I'd like to talk with you guys about. We have, first of all, I want to talk to you guys about this video. So we've gotten all the content from the filming that was originally done here. They were gracious to donate all that stuff, but we still need somebody to edit that and turn it into a film because I'm getting a lot of people asking me, well, you know, tell me about Monteville before I drive all the way down from Denver. Tell me a little bit more about this place. It'd be nice to create some sort of economically driven commercial for, for these people that I can send them and they can watch it and see, you know, the tax incentives, you know, the opportunity zone, you know, blah, blah, blah. And list all this stuff that we can list on the, on the, on the video. I do have a gentleman that's willing to edit that, add some more video to it, edit it all and create a commercial for about $1,000. And I would like to, I'd like to move forward with that gentleman. His quality is top notch. And so I was very impressed with him. So if that's something you guys would like, it would help a lot. Let's just put it that way. We have been leaning on Mr. Wilkins and his company pretty heavily. They have a lot of information. And I actually dedicated one person to, they're actually going to take him under his wing and do some training and apply for some of these available grants. And I think part of the problem is nobody's actually taking advantage of what they have to offer. So we're going to take full advantage of that. And I've got, I've got one person on the team that's, that's their full-time job is dedicated to just that. With that, a couple of the things that are kind of exciting that are coming, that we're talking about and working on is, one is a tech school that is related to farming, but it's also advancing technology in farming. Give you an example, we've got a drought going on now. This technology that the school is working on puts sensors in the ground that speak to the watering system and tells it how much water is in the ground and how much water it needs. So your sprinklers, instead of just all your sprinklers on at once, it just turns, you know, and when you're talking an entire potato circle, that's a lot of water. And with these little sensors in the ground, it can turn the sprinkler systems on and off. Another one is a drone that they're using to fly over cattle. And the cattle have tags in their ears and it sends a signal up to the drone and lets you know if there's any sick cattle and where your cattle are, things like that. So it's mixing technology and bringing, it's ways to bring the younger generation, I guess, into the agricultural industry that they've been having a harder time finding. And the young guys are all about drones and smartphones and all that stuff. So they're all over it now and it's pretty exciting. So we have, we're working on that. We do have the gym opening up, I believe, next week. We're pretty excited about that. The, we've got approval finally. What I've been running into is it's a little bit slower here than I'm used to. And I've been pushing hard, but things take a lot of time. I'll give you an example, just to get an appraisal on a commercial building is three months. I mean, it's, it's just ridiculous. I've called three, four, five different appraisal companies. I've even called some of my buddies in Denver to try and get somebody to come down here. But it's, yeah, it's like three months just to get an appraisal. And you can't purchase a building using bank funds without an appraisal. So you're talking about slowing down the economic process. I mean, the appraisal process is really something we need to try and fix. But there's a ton of opportunities here and I promised my wife I would not do it again. So we've got to find other people that can start these businesses, but an appraisal company is definitely at the top of that list of companies that need to be started here. We've been in talks with a, oh, the sushi building, I believe is, we're good to go on that. So we're going to be moving forward on that here pretty soon. That was, again, just paperwork and delays and waiting for all that to happen. We, I've been in talks with a gentleman out of Taos about an ethanol plant and bringing ethanol plant here. They're using old potatoes to do that and convert. And he seems to have some pretty good funding on that and looks like that is a pretty good possibility. I would say right now it's about a 60% possibility. It's looking better every time we talk. So we're working on that. We've taken all the empty building liability away from the city and got rid of that, which was one of the problems I've mentioned to you guys before, is getting rid of that liability. So we've taken those buildings, we're slowly renovating, renting them out and getting, you know, getting new people into those buildings and getting them used again. So that's been, that's been a great plus. And that's, that's pretty much it this time around. So do you guys have any questions for me or have you gotten any feedback from the city? I've heard nothing but positive so far, but you know, everybody kind of tainted when they talk to me because, you know, because of who I, yeah, they're like, oh yeah, it's going good. Yeah, but you know, if you guys hear anything, please, please let me know. But so far, it's going good. Any questions?
I was curious, which handle to get hold of the R E C about the data mining?
Oh, that's another one. Oh, that's, no, that one's a tough one. So we're still working with R E C on that. It's another thing that's just slow moving. That guy is ready to write a check and build a building right now, but it's just the, we don't have the electrical infrastructure in the valley. But we're working, we're working with R E C to make that happen, yes. And that's huge because he's a, yeah, he's like, I could build one plant, I could build 20 plants. You just tell me how big your, your electrical, you know, how big an electrical outlet they're going to put, you know, give him and he'll plug in whatever they allow him. Anybody else?
You're still wrestling, it's been a while since we talked, you and we organized together, quite worked out. But one of the main things we've talked about was this appraisal thing and it's still, you still can't find anybody even reasonably local and not in the front range.
Just to give an example, you know, one of the, you know, one of the things I wanted to do was get an appraisal on the buildings that you guys own. And just so we can have a starting point to see where we sit with these buildings. And it was to appraise the old police station, the best quote I got was $2,700 and three months out. And I just thought that was ridiculous, in my opinion. I'm sorry, but that's just not, that's not normal for most of Colorado. I mean, you can get an appraisal, you do within a week or two at the most in the, in the front range, pretty much anywhere in the front range. So I hear, I hear a lot of, you know, and these are all, these are all red flags or telltale signs, it's time for the industry to get shaken up. But I hear a lot of, well, that's just the way it's always been. I've always done it that way. Sorry, it's just, you know, can't do it. We're just busy. And I looked at their model, their business model, and I was able to quickly figure out a way to do it to where you can easily accomplish this in under two weeks. But they, they just don't want to change right now, so.
That sounds like a good opportunity for a.
Excellent opportunity. The average, the average age of an appraiser is 58 years old nationwide, which is, which is telling you that there's not enough young people in there to, to get things moving.
Since that's what you do, have you?
Oh, yeah, I'm working on the trust. I'm not ready to start with myself, I'm so, I'm just ready to get this thing going. But yeah, so I've contacted a gentleman out of Denver and he's, we're looking at, actually it's a pretty smart idea. We, we've been working on creating an app that basically, can't go into too much detail, but yeah, it basically will speed up the process and get it done in under two weeks. And so if, if we can go ahead and get that, get the green light on that, which he's talking to his partners on right now, if we can get the green light on that, not only will that be beneficial here, but he's talking about moving it down here and basing it out of here, but it would be something that he could easily expand nationwide, actually.
Is this exclusively commercial or is there?
No, no, it would be residential and commercial.
There's a problem with residential.
There's a problem with residential here too. So yes, yes. So yeah, we're definitely working on that one. Now it's definitely at the top of the list. Anybody else? All right. Thanks, guys. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Perez?
I can give counsel a report on the matter if you'd like. Please do that.
Of course.
Haven't seen you much this week, Mayor. It's kind of getting withdrawal. Most of the rest of you as well. So basically, the city has a utility customer, water sewer, pest control, street light customer, who bought a, purchased a property in the city at 435 Lyle. And when that property was purchased, it had some past due utility bills. Now, our policy per our municipal code is that those utility bills attach to the property, not to the customer. Purchaser did not go through a title company, this would have shown up, purchased the property from the seller and then found out that there was a bunch of outstanding liens on it, not ours necessarily. Some components were ours and some were the county's. So the purchaser then paid off those liens. Purchaser was, has another address in town and was receiving our bills, which included the original amount of $640, and those continue to add up. I didn't have any communication with these new owners. Basically, they were told when they came in, if they wanted to turn the water on, that they had to pay the past due. And that didn't happen over the course of another year. Those bills added up. And per our policy, we then placed them on a lien. And that kind of actually goes back to a discussion that I had with Mr. Logan, and then we'll have with finance about collections. Because what we're finding, it shouldn't be a surprise, I guess, but we're finding, we put these liens on there and they sit there. And actually kind of going through this process we're going through with U R A right now, you start looking at a lot of these liens or city utility liens, and that's money sitting out there that the city has hoped to collect someday. And I'm not sure that's the best way to do it. We'll have some discussions with the finance regarding that going forward. But in any case, so Mr. Perez came in and met with me with John Nelson and, you know, discussed that they're rehabbing the house and getting ready to live in, which is great. We applaud him for doing that. Obviously put some money in the house and asked to have the water turned on so they could finish their repairs. They did find when they were doing that, that the previous owners had blocked off the sewer line or cut it and the water line as well. However, our taps were still available there, they were not abandoned. And I believe, was that earlier this year, Rob? Where you had a similar issue with a gentleman that had water taps and he didn't want to have to pay for them. And so you got a choice, either abandon them or you pay for them. That's the way the policy works. So regardless of that, so we allowed them to turn the water on for a minimal payment towards this well. We did some analysis on it. And had heard from them and said, you know, if you want to ask for anything from the city, you know, the city council has the ability per our code with recommendation from the city manager or the public works director to make some accommodations to the bills. So as we sent a notice of shut off because they've been turned on to do this, and then Mr. Perez and Mr. Nelson came back in and talked to me again. And so I said, okay, you guys are applying on the city council to do this. Well, if you bring your, your, this year's account current, we'll allow the water stay on while the council, we get this from the city council. And so we did that, the water is currently still on. And they did pay the current bill. So outside of the lien, which is on the property, they are current with utilities. The lien is $1,704.76 and it is properly filed with the county. And basically, in your packet, you have a request for the council to waive that. I reached out to the city attorney, had a discussion about this. I personally felt like, or professionally felt like, either one, that it set maybe not a good precedent, precedence based upon what our code says. Because every time, you know, and we do this and our utility billing clerk does this and staff does it, when people are talking about buying a property, like go to a title company. Because these liens will show up, these past due bills will show up. Those things show up and then you can make a decision on whether you're going to buy it or not. In this case, it didn't happen. So honestly, why should the rest of the rate payers, you look at our rate base and we have losses on uncollected debt? And so essentially, if we don't collect these, then the rest of the rate payers are subsidizing other people's errors, if you will. And honestly, I don't think that's fair to the rate payers as a whole, because if that debt mounts, then, you know, we have to look like, how are we going to offset that? So in this case, you know, we looked at it, I spoke with the city attorney and, you know, the maximum recommendation that, that I would provide to you is that we can give the applicant up to a year to pay off that lien and keep their account current. You certainly can do less than that. I would argue that by the ordinance, you can't do more. So it's really up to you all besides that. I was hoping he would be here this evening to make his case. I'm not trying to be disparaging in any way, simply trying to, you know, I think we're trying to be fair, not only to him, but. not only to him, but to all of our ratepayers. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, I tried to do an executive summary and I walked all over that, but that's basically what we have.
Well, I tend to agree with you, I've been in the real estate business for a long time, can't imagine anybody you wouldn't think of buying a property without a title search. Two different states, not in Colorado, maybe that's standard here, I don't know, but it's pretty simple, it's a couple hundred dollars, you can so.
And I guess I have to agree, I think it would set a precedent that would spill over in not a very good way, uh, if, if we excused the debt. And so I don't think we can do that, I think I would be in favor of allowing him some time to, to, you know, pay that off. Like you said, not more than a year, but, um, which would be about a hundred and fifty bucks a month, maybe, for him, I don't know.
Well, essentially, he would have to save the money and pay the county, um, that debt, 'cause it is a
It's a county debt, not a city debt.
Right.
No, I, I completely agree, I don't think it's a good precedence to set. And we need to move forward with our water projects, water sewer projects, and we can't just repay all these.
So we're gonna have to
I was just curious, if someone abandons their tap, is that the right wording, what does it cost to
Well, assuming they abandoned both water sewer and tap, that's five thousand dollars?
Four thousand fifty bucks.
Oh, four thousand fifty, okay.
For both of them?
As long as it's in the city. And our code requires that the only time you can actually abandon the tap is if there's no longer a structure, it has to be vacant land. As long as there is a structure, you're not able to abandon taps.
And they just chose to cut them themselves?
Well, the previous owner apparently did, yeah.
I think the city's actually been pretty accommodating, uh, with him already, and the allowances and turning on the water and, you know, keeping, if he'll bring the bill up current, I think that the city's actually been pretty lenient, and I know he's in a predicament, I don't want to, you know, feel like I'm sliding him at all, but I think we've done an awful lot to help him.
And we'll continue to if we pay the county lien
Right.
receive payments for it, so I think that's
Well, actually, um, counselor, we wouldn't receive the payments for it, it's up to him to go and satisfy that lien with the county and provide us the receipts. So, he can pay that, you know, however he wants to to them, but
Cause you haven't mentioned that we would allow him a year.
Allow him a year to provide us with receipts that show that the lien has been satisfied.
Okay, so whatever the county, cause that was my next question, is are they willing to, but it's not our place.
No, really, the county just cares that the, that the money is paid off.
Right. Makes sense to me.
So, any motion on his proposal, his request?
Yes, sir.
Well, I would move that we reject the request, but allow one year's time to repay the lien.
And I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to deny the request. And give Mr. Perez twelve months to have lien, the county satisfied, on the count of four thirty-five Lyle, sir, any more discussion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I could suggest a, a friendly amendment to that, um, that, and at all times during that year period, um, Mr. Perez's account on this property is kept current.
I would so amend the, the, uh, motion.
And then we need the second, thank you.
Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Ellipar?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for this.
Citizen comments, citizen, cit- Citizen coun- Si- City council, welcome, welcome to your unscheduled comments, please limit to three minutes, council will not take action at the same meeting.
If I may, apparently Jeff Huff is reaching out.
Technology.
Technology. And he would like to say that he bought pizza for everyone. And apparently the mayor has something he's supposed to read.
So it's time, I tell you the pizza showed up?
Yeah, it's here, and he's texting me and he's probably watching.
Okay, we'll do this first. To the city of Montavista, I just wanna do again, thank everyone for letting me be a small part of what I consider a family. Although not being my first choice to leave, I know with the entire staff here and good citizens, you will all be fine. I have enclosed this lottery ticket as a sign of hope and faith. As whether you win or lose, as long as you keep trying, there is always a chance. And I hope you win to not only help the city, but to especially keep my brothers in blue safe. Led by no one better than my friend, okay. Bear with me, guys, I suck it up. Led by no one better than my friend Chief John Rosecrambs. I just wanted, I want you to remember me with a small piece, so I can convince my wife to let me retire. As for the pizza, I'm sure I missed some of you in saying goodbye, and it's my way of thanking not just one, but as many as possible. Besides Forrest mentioned, pizza and beer to me, and I al- I, and although I would have loved nothing more than to share that, that beer with you, my friend, I did the next best thing, and as much as I know you care about the citizens of Monte, I'm sure you're just as happy sharing a piece or two. Mayor Becker, thank you for coming to my side again in reading this, as it has been my pleasure to serve all of you. Although I love challengers trying to kee- trying to top this experience, all these wonderful people have given me will be next to impossible. Please be safe, keep smiling, and you are all in my prayers. Jeffrey Huff.
Nice.
It's in the hall and the round table.
There's ten of them.
You guys are reading too.
Wow.
That's awesome.
Didn't want to just tell him anything, uh, next soon.
Be a nice letter to the editor.
Uh, could we, could we get that? Okay, Nita, your turn. Top that.
Actually, I have something to go along with that as well. Um, I would like for everybody to give Brandon a round of applause. Brandon, I was away at, um, institute last week and had a laptop to be able to log in to do work from the institute. First night was fine, by Wednesday, I couldn't log in, it kept giving me errors. Um, Brandon, I was in the middle class, Brandon texted me, um, continued to text me back and forth, I'd sent him pictures from my phone of what was on the screen. Eventually, he was able to log in remotely and about two hours worth of work, he got my computer working and I was able to do work, so I want to thank you so much for saving me, thank you, Brandon. And then, um, I just wanted to let council know that I have two special event permits going out this next week. One is for stampede that we all are aware of, the other one is for the Elks. Um, the Elks is going to be hosting a dance on Saturday evening at the Elks Club. So they have, uh, requested a special event permit for there as well. Thanks. The only thing I have, any questions?
No. Thanks, David.
Is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
May I speak from here?
Yes, sir.
I have a question with regard to the appraisal that Mr. Douglas mentioned. Can you tell me how many buildings that he wants to get appraised, and do you have a commitment to pay for the appraisal?
Uh, excuse me, anything you want?
That's not on the city's dime.
Yeah, that's Ron taking care of that, I do not know how many he needs, Charlie. You'd have to contact him.
So, you, you have no idea what buildings he wants to get appraised?
Well, it does, if I can answer that, I mean, uh, the Valley Polishing Building, the old P D, and I'm not sure what other buildings that he's looking at appraising one. So at least those two, but those are not at city's cost.
Are they holding up some aspect of business development?
Yes, sir.
If you allow me, I may be able to help out and appraise it for you, get it done faster, if you're permitted to pay for it.
We're not, Ron would be.
So there is money?
Yeah. But it's Ron's, Ron's money is doing it.
It's Mr. Douglas, it's, it's Mr. Douglas that's gonna pay for it, or his group.
Okay, so two buildings and he'll pay for the appraisal. Do, are your desires of having the appraisal done quicker than three months?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I may be able to help also.
Thank you, Charles.
Good.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nita, do you have to give us information on the special voucher?
No, I just did.
Okay, thank you. Ordinances. Number eight-eight-six.
Do you want to, I'm, I'm happy to.
Which one you guys, you're playing.
Who's, who's on, whose line is it?
So, um, Nita was able to reach out through some of her, um, clerk contacts. Uh, networking is good, you know, basically come up with the bones of this ordinance. Um, also passed them through, uh, Mike Trujillo, and, uh, you basically came up with an ordinance. And you might say, hey, you know, the forest lifted their fire bans, which is awesome, we have some monsoonal rains, that's great. Uh, but we're still left without a facility, if you will, or an ordinance which allows the police chief with, you know, due evidence to, um, institute a fire ban. Most communities, um, well, I don't know if it's most communities, but most statutory communities have that ability. Um, and so, staff would recommend that you pass this ordinance knowing that the chief is not, at this time, uh, necessarily going to institute one, because we have had some moisture. But it will give the police chief in the future, um, if we run into, hopefully, we don't run into this problem next year, but if we do, um, we can be in front of it and follow, um, you know, what's going on. You know, the, the county did not declare one for the eastern part, but I can guarantee we all felt it was very dry and with the, with the fires that were surrounding us at various points, uh, I think it's a necessary thing to have. Um, in addition, the ordinance tonight, um, actually had a discussion with Counselor Lorenz, uh, regarding what we do allow to burn. Basically, we don't have any restrictions on what people can individually, uh, burn, and it's a little ironic that we require every residential address to have trash service. We do, it's required by ordinance as well, and we have cited people for not having that, we're convinced them that they wanna do that rather than get cited. So there's really no reason for trash to be burned, uh, yard waste, um, seems like a reasonable thing, I had a ice pile in the back of my yard, which, based on dry conditions, I pulled a landfill, but at the time, I could've burned them. Uh, I didn't feel like that was probably a good idea, and, uh, bring up Jeff again, uh, he actually helped put out a, uh, yeah, several, uh, where people were burning where it really didn't seem very safe. So, uh, I'd recommend council approve ordinance eight-eight-six tonight, as well as direct staff to work on an additional ordinance, um, modification to, uh, the nuisance code or wherever you might be in offenses, about what you can burn. Or more aptly, what you can't. So, um, you know, we're a city, and, uh, you know, it seems like, you know, burning a few leaves in your yard in the fall is probably not a big deal, but there's really not, in this day and age, a reason, um, since you are required to have trash service. And the landfill, I mean, I took that big thing of, of my yard waste and it took a lot of crunching to get it in the truck and take it up there and it cost five dollars. So, you know, um, and we do our spring cleanup, which is a massive, um, effort on the part of public works, which we appreciate. So, I think, you know, obviously I'd like you to approve the ordinance and then if you direct staff to further investigate restrictions on burning going forward, uh, that would be great.
And Forrest, I'd like to just interject that, um, we did, um, post this in the paper on the ninth. So if it is approved, if you choose to approve it this evening, it goes into effect immediately.
But for the public in the newspaper, we're not instituting a fire ban tonight, if you approve it.
We'll make sure.
And we will call the county and explain that to them as well, that, that we passed an ordinance, but it doesn't institute a ban.
I had a call from sheriff's department already today.
Wow, okay. We'll, we'll call them tomorrow and C S B dis- if you approve it, to explain it to C S B dispatch, the sheriff's department and Roden Bridge. And that will still also be our fire chief.
It's an ordinance that we're approving that the chief can then act on when, when
When necessary, yes. I think that's good.
This would probably go on some sort of communication with you.
I would move to approve the ordinance number eight-eight-six, amending Article Seven against public peace and uh, go into further talk with, uh, and being able to, uh, proceed with the, with the eight dash seven dash one-one-zero and emergency fire ban.
Need to read the whole thing? I'll probably better.
I imagine. I, I imagine if we read it fully, if, if you wanna, I'll be happy to do that, you had a lot of reading earlier.
I would appreciate that.
So, ordinance eight-eight-six is an ordinance in the city of Montavista, Colorado, amending Article Seven, offenses against public peace of the municipal code of the city of Montavista, Colorado, uh, by adding section eight dash seven dash one-ten, emergency fire bans, setting forth details in relation thereto and declaring an emergency therefor.
Thank you, Forrest. We moved in seconded, is there any more discussion?
Nope.
Nita?
Counselor Ellipar?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselors, Counselor Lorenz? Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Did you need another motion about the?
That was all I had.
It was all in.
Yeah. I think we get council's direction, thank you. Forrest, have you given us the airport or Ron?
That's, uh, Ron.
Mr. Danz?
Hello there, again.
Good to see you.
More of an informational thing, I do have a request. Um, as council probably remembers, this year we're in the process of doing an RF, um, request for qualifications for airport consultants to do our planning process for our master plan for our airport. That RFQ was actually noticed and we received five responses. Um, city staff along with the airport board gathered to review those plans and those proposals, and we decided unanimously that the best choice was Dow Engineering, they're a small firm, um, they've got primarily in Wyoming, New Mexico, and they've got an office here in Denver. Um, they're, they're very eager to earn our business. They're very eager to earn our business. They deal with rural airports. They don't deal with the big regional airports. So they're really geared more towards our needs. And that was during the RFQ. That was what actually got all of the people that reviewed it to kind of become there in favor of them because they did personalize their qualification statement to Montevista's airport. They actually went out on site. They did some research. They talked to the users out there. So we are in, currently in the process of doing contract negotiations with them. It's kind of a weird process. We have the scope of services that's been approved. Tomorrow, I'll receive their funds, what it's going to cost us, which is actually nothing because it becomes a grant through the FAA. And as soon as I have that and review that, I then will send that out tomorrow afternoon to an independent contractor review, which we already have somebody online for that, a small firm. They'll review and give us a recommendation that the fees are within reason for the FAA. So I should have all of that back by Monday. The feds this last week went ahead and issued the appropriation of funds. So we actually have the funds available. So we're kind of in a quick timeframe right at the moment to get our grant finalized. So what I would like council, I would answer any questions you might have, but if one of the council would be willing to make a motion to allow us to move forward and have the mayor sign that grant when it does come in. Because the way the feds do work on this is they expect it to be ready once the funds are appropriated. So there's a small chance that we would lose the funding if we waited until the next council meeting. So our name's in there, like I said. Should be, I'm hoping everything will be done by next week. But like I said, I'm not sure we should really wait till the following council meeting. So if you guys are comfortable with that. Just so everybody's clear, we partner, our airport partners, with CDOT Aeronautics and the FAA. And they supply funding for us to do projects and as well as to do consulting services. They have a list of approved consultants that just pretty much go around the state. And they work on airports and the funding is really covered by the FAA and the state. Our master plan is a $350,000 project, of which, when it's all said and done, we will pay 5%. The feds and the state picks up everything else. So it's a really good program for us. It's not something that we could afford to do on our own, so a lot of paperwork. Would that, any questions you may have?
So you would need a motion to...
If you would make a motion, yeah, to let city staff review and receive and once the grant comes in, if Mayor Becker would be able to sign outside of an established council meeting. Just to get the grant submitted and then, of course, I would bring it to council and do it more formally.
Go ahead, Gary.
Well, I've moved that we, as the council, authorize the receipt and review of the grant...
For airport planning services.
For airport planning services. And authorize the mayor to sign and release that.
Outside of a council meeting?
Outside of, oh, outside of the council meeting.
Yes, please.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Councilor Ellipore?
Aye.
Councilor Segala?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate what you've said.
Thanks for your work on that. Let's not walk.
Staff reports. Forrest?
Mayor, members of council, here I am again. And for some reason, the last two weeks have been really busy. They've been really busy for Public Works and the PD. Obviously, we're all getting ready for Stampede. And then I've just been, well, this is the fourth evening meeting this week. So it's been kind of busy. Some interesting things that have come up, I suppose, or some updates I want to give you that were not in my report since we pretty much covered all that. Not sure exactly where we start. I should start with the fun stuff or not. So I'm going to start with one thing that some of you have had the experience and the joy of meeting the Kirby vacuum salespeople. So we issued a news release this afternoon. This is on All Bar Media, went to newspapers, radio, et cetera. Kind of this follows, and I'll have an explanation for it. The City of Montevista does have an ordinance which requires, this ordinance number 850, it was adopted in 2013. A lot of people think we do not allow door-to-door salespersons. And we used to not. It's called the Green River Ordinance. Savalus Ordinance. I love those. But through the wisdom of the US court system, the system has, you know, the courts have determined that that might violate people's free speech. I will give you my personal opinion on those rulings other than to say, okay. So in 2013, the city adopted ordinance 850, which updated our Green River Ordinance to allow for door-to-door sales, transit merchants, et cetera, through a permitting process. And to be very clear, Kirby has not come in to see the city clerk, fill out the application, which requires fingerprinting of all the salespersons amongst some other things. And they are issued a permit, which they're required to have in their possession. Over the last few years, you might have seen a few security sales groups, which did come in and get permitted. And when they come to your door, if they do, they got their deal right there that shows that the city issued them a permit to do that. So basically, in our news release, we asked the public if you encounter somebody from Kirby on your property, to call 852-5111, non-emergency police dispatch. And we'll have some officers have a nice visit with them, find out who's running the crew. And either they come in and get properly licensed or they go their merry way. It's really simple. And we're not picking on Kirby, but they seem to be in town. And there are restrictions within the permit of what hours you may sell. And you can't sell after 8:00 PM. So their tactics don't comport with our code or our ordinance. This ordinance is not codified. Nevertheless, it is fully legal and properly enacted. It just not, didn't make it in the code book. But Nita was able to find it. Thank you, Nita. And so we're just appealing to the public that if they encountered these folks, to call and we'll have a nice encounter with them and they can either get licensed or move on. Either one's fine from the city's standpoint, but basically, we require the licensure. And it is to ensure the safety of the citizens and to verify their, these folks' ability and their bona fide, so to speak. I've had some encounters with this particular company in the past in another state. And I'm not surprised by this tactic. Nonetheless, if they want to come in and get licensed, they can. So it'll be out all over the place. It's probably on Facebook already. So hopefully, we'll get some responses to that. Azrael wanted me to remind you all, Belisha sent you an email about the Second Annual San Luis Valley Economic Summit. That is on August 6, 2018. If you're interested in attending that, if you let her know, she'll get you registered. I will be attending that because I have to speak for three minutes. So, and it's an interesting conference. I went to the last one. And it actually kind of was originally generated by the City of Montevista. A number of years ago, we held, it wasn't the San Luis Valley Economic Summit, it was the City of Montevista Economic Summit. And we did that for a couple of years. And then basically, Adam State got involved in it. They're like, wow, we should expand this to the whole valley. So this is a result of that. So like I said, if you're interested in that, let Azrael know in the next few days and she'll get you signed up for it. I did want to thank Debbie very much for all the work that you've done pumping this up together. And Jenny for walking through the fire of her first few weeks, which included audit, which is pretty amazing. And, you know, Nita and Rob both contributed to that effort, particularly on the, you know, Nita and the work on the court issues, the court module that we have. It's Casell, just like our regular system, but it works a little differently and it always has. And we're working on making that better. Getting approvals from Casell is like, you know, trying to get GM to change a widget in a vehicle. It just doesn't happen very quickly. But overall, you know, we're fairly satisfied with their work. Okay. So I didn't know if the council wanted to take action this evening on a request by LBA to fund the video for $1,000. That's strictly up to you. I just wrote it down there because we didn't discuss that at all after Ron's presentation. I do think it's a useful marketing tool. And I know that the footage that I've seen, that was from the film crew that was coming down to pitch a show, it's not a home video. It's really good quality. So that's something that you could consider tonight or think about for until the next meeting. Okay.
Question on that? Are you familiar with rates? You know, is that a comparable rate?
Honestly, I, it sounds fairly inexpensive to me. You know, I know that sounds bad, but, you know, putting together a bunch of video and all that stuff, it's usually, I would think it would cost more than that. So knowing Mr. Douglas, he may have connections.
Does that then become our property? Do we get to keep it if Ron Douglas...
There's a great stipulation, counselor. I think that that would do, that it becomes the property of the city if we're paying for it.
I would think so. That's, yeah.
Is there a timeframe possibly when it's going to be done?
Another good question. So, you know, based on those, I think I can circle back with them. And, I mean, in the timeframe when the next meeting is, which is very soon, I get those answers for you and we can move forward on that or not. But it'll get you some more information to consider.
How long is that video? Do you have any idea?
Don't know how long it would be, but...
That's all right.
Not till it's edited. I'm pretty sure you don't know.
Well, I mean, in its raw form or what their target is, but...
30 seconds or 5 minutes or...
Yeah, I don't know, so...
That could be easily, the, what he was talking about, as long as it's, as long as it's long enough to sell the town, which is what he's after. The typical price of editing, something like that would be a lot more than $1,000. So, well beyond that, easily.
That was kind of my thought, so we'll get some details from him. He'll answer your questions. Maybe we'll have him back to answer those questions.
Perfect.
But in any case, I'll bring that to the next council meeting. And then now I get to talk about something and ask, what Rob just asked you again, is to authorize the mayor to sign a document outside of a council meeting. And let me explain what this is about. So in the process of having these discussions with users groups about what might happen with Sky High, I think amongst the group that was present at the last meeting and some further discussions is that, you know, we really do need to look at a new facility. We don't have any real plans for a new facility or a site drawing that really contemplates the discussion, which is, you know, using the existing multipurpose building until something new is available, which would mean picking a site. And I would, my recommendation, and I'm not a landscape architect or anything, is to put that to the north. And then we have the large parking lot and probably move the softball, somewhere the softball fields are, move the softball fields to east. But in any case, you know, there was a question about could we get a consultant to do that? Who would pay for that? How would it work? I did reach out to Christie Dune at DOLA, our favorite DOLA rep. And they do have a matching grant. They'll match dollar for dollar up to $25,000. Based on kind of some past proposals the city's had, I'm thinking that that's a $75,000 project. Maybe a little bit more. But we also have a commitment from the users groups to match a third of the cost. So 25 out of the city, if it's 75, 25 out of the city, 25 out of DOLA, and 25 from users groups. And you say, well, Forrest, where would we get $25,000? Always a good question. I'd like that one. What I would propose is that we did have $150,000 set aside for the structural renovation of the multipurpose facility, which joyously doesn't have to happen now. We had discussed re-roofing it. I guess, you know, the point being, are we going to put that money into it, which would probably take most of the $150 to do that? Or are we going to put some money into planning for the new facility? I don't know that that's a coin toss. You know, Mr. Vance and I have had this discussion numerous times about how much do you put into something that you're, need, that you need to replace? And, you know, my opinion is we need to replace it. And I think that's commonly shared, that that's a great building. It's been super serviceable to the community. But you could put $300,000 or $400,000 into it to bring it up to nice-ish. So, ish. So my recommendation to the council is that you authorize me to, and of course, I have to have this grant in by, oh, July 31st. So that's a short cycle. I believe I can put that together. But we wouldn't have a council meeting before the 31st. So my request would be to authorize staff to prepare the grant application. And it is required that the application, and the coolest thing about this application is it's not 43 pages of state forms. It's a letter application. They have required components and I've reviewed that. And we can certainly come up with almost all the answers in a week or so with stamping thrown in there. So my request would be to allow us to prepare that grant and to have Mayor Becker sign that for some little prior to July 31st. And then we can, you know, based on what I've seen in a couple of other past proposals that didn't necessarily, there were proposals made to the city. I think that's the ballpark amount that we would spend. Might be a tad more.
And the other user groups are on board and also for them.
We do have a...
They're committed to their third.
Yes, we do have a commitment from them, so...
Well, I would motion to approve the preparation of the grant application and allow Mayor Becker to sign a document outside of the council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Have staff prepare the grant paperwork. Have Mayor Becker sign outside of council. Any more discussion?
Forrest coming in.
Forrest coming in. Any more discussion? Nita?
Councilor Ellipore?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So one other item that I'm working on is the RV park. And, you know, I love the term abundance of caution. And I have reached out to, well, actually reached out to Railroad and then got their property management company fairly quickly response. And they're amenable to... And they're amenable to the pathway right of way. We had discussions about the right, you know, do we need right of way from them down Jefferson, which is technically their county road 35. I guess they overlap. But, and we'll have to do a little quick research on that, but they feel like the roadway width that is granted to the county for that county road would accommodate the crossing. The only other piece that I'm working with them on right now is just to see what the crossing standards are. In the, I was unable to locate so far CDOTs standards. I'm assuming they have them. Most states do. I have got Utah's and, you know, theirs are pretty rigorous. But we really don't know what that would look like or what that would cost. But, so I'm digging into that. And I think once we kind of have that ascertained, we'll know a lot more about costs. You know, it'd have to be an ADA crossing. And there's some interesting things I learned about the installation of the rubber flanges along the rails and other kinds of things. But anyway, so I'm working on that. I didn't have it on my report because I was waiting to hear back from the railroad guys. But once I got hold of the right gentleman, who was very helpful and was like, yeah, send me some more details. So I think we're on a good trajectory with the railroad. We'll figure out what the crossing looks like.
Is there lights in?
This is, this is the question of what exactly, well, and we would pay for that.
Okay.
But the question is, what are, what are the standards? You know, the only thing I could find in Colorado were RTD standards, which are like mind boggling. But they're in a, you know, for their light rail and such. And of course, that's a high traffic environment and all that other stuff. And so I'll keep trying to find CDOTs and work with the railroad folks and see, you know, it's based on travel frequency, a whole bunch of other things. So I'm learning about a new topic. And I think, but so far it's, seems to be, I got a good response. I actually, you know, sent the initial email to Ed Ellis and, you know, three days after that, I got the first call from the guy from the railroad. So that was encouraging that they're responsive. And, you know, I'm just waiting to hear from the backroom on the standards issue. And basically, they seem very good with the pathway he's been. He's like, yeah, that should be minimal cost. So working on that. Amongst other things, also still working on the golf course MOU. I haven't gotten super far on that, I'll admit, because while there's a few other things going on, I do have some time scheduled next week to work on that. I think next week should be better scheduling than this week was. So I did have, you know, there's just some really, just general comments, some really interesting things going on. We had a property that we've had some issues with code violations on and the owners were from out of state. And they called me yesterday and said, hey, we're in town and we're gonna clean up our property and can you come down and meet with us? It's like, wow. You know, it's been a while that we've been trying to talk to them. And they're actually gonna put fence around the property. There is a partial old one, which they're gonna replace with a new one. They're gonna clean up all of the weeds. There's a couple of buildings on it that need to be boarded up. And then there's a house on there, which is really cute. And they're gonna rehab it and make it a rental. So it's really nice to meet them. They were great folks. So that was a good code win. And our new code enforcement officer, are you gonna talk about that? Excellent. Almost step on your foot. But he's, he's, he is hard charging already. So you could talk more about that. But honestly, you know, and there's just other things that, you know, I just hear a lot of good positive things. And I think people are feeling that way. And wait, you know, it's supposed to be school time because I hear the marching band. So...
Stampede.
I was in stampede.
Getting ready for a stampede parade.
Getting ready for the parade.
Well, it's almost school time too. I'm counting the days till my kid goes back to school.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
I just happened to know.
Well, yeah, you would know that. So thirty days. But, no, you know, my kid's great, but, you know, school is good too. So in any case, unless you all have any questions for me, I will yield the floor.
One question I had is we made a statement, or not statement, but we talked about the ordinance book, code book.
Oh, yes, sir. Thanks for bringing that up. So the, the Charter Revision Advisory Board, I think I got that right this time.
Close enough.
Close enough, yeah. I struggle with that title. But, yeah, and I don't think we've had any additional applicants. Oh?
Just one.
Just one? Sweet.
So it's just Breena.
Oh, okay. So Breena has graciously asked to be appointed to that. And then we have, am I, is that use K squared again?
Correct.
Or Kathy's?
Oh.
Counselor Kathy's or K squared have volunteered to be on that as well.
Okay.
So did that answer your question? So y'all would need to make an appointment and you could do that during the last part of the meeting.
Okay.
And we'll, we definitely won't meet before stampede.
Right.
The only other thing I have a question on is the user groups. And I've had meetings for Sky High Park. But I think some of the user groups have not written stuff down and not been there. I know I haven't and I apologize for that. But if they haven't been present, then they're panicking. Because I get the panic phone call. And I've not been to the meeting, so I don't have a clue. I just tell them relax and calm down and think, okay. But we just need to make sure that we definitely involve them. So the next one, did you guys set the date for the next?
No, there's not a date for the next meeting. But I think we'll have one after stampede. Because that's almost like one of the user groups that we know they're really busy and they were not able to attend either. And I don't think we had representation from the fair board.
No.
No. So a couple of majors there that weren't there. So we'll have some further discussions. I don't think it'll really affect going after this grant, you know, but will affect. We definitely want them to participate in the discussion. Say we get a consultant going, you know, we do an RFP of what, you know, the components are that are necessary. So, yeah, we'll definitely try to loop them in. And of course, everything's easier after stampede, right? Right, Ron?
Yes, sir.
And then I'm sure that Kathy, you'll talk about National Light Out, right? Excellent. I'll let you do that. And I can sit down unless there's anything else.
I'm just impressed that you got through to the railroad people and got that step, that's going along regarding the RTD park. So, yeah, I'm impressed with that. Thank you for your work.
You're welcome. I was pleasantly surprised by the speed of response. So, but I guess if you send it to the president of the company, roll back down hill nicely. So, I'm not sure he knew I had his email address.
He's probably gonna change it now.
Probably. Thank you for this. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, council, I'm trying to keep this short and sweet. A lot of things going on in the city. Does he try and review ordinances as they come up with Forrest and, and just seems like every week or there's a couple of issues of what about this? What about that? And Mr. Perez was kind of a good example where Forrest said, hey, what do you think? And I, I, I didn't think it was a good precedence for the city to set that. You know, giving them more time was a, I thought, a logical and good approach to things and try and work with people. But, you know, everybody's got problems. Everybody's got an issue and finances always come into play. But I think that was a good solution to, to a problem. And so I think we were on board with that. Reviewing some cases that are coming up in city court. We do have our judge still. The governor made an appointment that was not our judge. So that was good news in a way. But month of August is gonna be a little bit busy with some pre-trials and trials. So we'll, we'll get those handled. With the auditor here, I did get a letter. And we'll be doing a, a letter for the auditors as well as the city attorney. And in conjunction with that, I think there's been some settlement negotiations with the Delgado's. Looks to me like we should have something resolved on that maybe by next week. So that would be good news. And I've reviewed some of their proposals, settlement proposals. And I'm not sure about the amount, but we'll see. I, Forrest and I are a lot cheaper than a source of attorneys. But, but they have to defend it and they know what the costs are. And so I think, you know, probably end up having to defer to that. Had a urban renewal meeting. It was my first with the folks. And I think Mayor Becker was there last as well. Good board, I thought, really. A lot of good ideas, a lot of bright people there. And the, I think we're working on some projects. I've come up with a couple ideas that I think are gonna get the properties quicker. And we discussed those, I think, in executive last time. But I think by the spring, we're gonna have some properties cleaned up and probably get some properties for a lot less than maybe otherwise would have had to pay. A lot of these properties are on the tax roll and we can pick them up at a fairly cheap expense. And people don't probably want them anyway. So it'll help us get some of these things cleaned up. But I thought the Urban Renewal Board was a good board and some good people on there. So I was impressed. Don't have too much other than that. I'm going to, to be on vacation a little bit in California next week. I'll be, have my phone and my emails. So I'm sure that if something comes up, we can, we can take care of it. So I don't know if any of the council have any questions, but that's about as good for me.
No.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Chief Bruce? Good evening, Mayor, councilors. So I have to ask, can I put fire chief on my resume then?
There you go.
Just checking.
They might have to wrestle somebody.
I have to put in effect first, though.
Right.
City Fire Chief. All right. So it's been an interesting week. We've been busy. Neighborhood Watch recap there was pretty exciting, especially from the Montevista standpoint. We had six, I think, people at the Crime Stoppers meeting from Montevista. Mark Crenshaw, Andrea Helsink, my wife, Nikki Rosecrantz, who else was there? Karina, is that it all? Who am I missing? Wasn't there five? I guess I'm thinking of me. Five from our...
Josh was there.
Josh, that's right. Josh. Back.
Six.
So six. So that's pretty cool.
Oh, did you? I forgot.
I knew, I knew. Sorry. That's why I looked at you and then I forgot you. So that was really exciting. And then we got to take that information right over to Neighborhood Watch and share with everybody. We have Crime Stoppers banners. We actually have gotten a Crime Stoppers call on a post that I made, trying to find a wanted person. So I think there's a little bit of synergy going between our hope of, I don't know the right word exactly, but integrating the two entities, the Neighborhood Watch and the concepts that we want to prevent crime and the ability to maybe reach out past some of the traditional methods through Crime Stoppers. Because there's cash involved. That seems to help a little bit. The second thing that we just kind of talked about was the, the new shirts are in for Neighborhood Watch. And that was pretty awesome. And there they are. Molding for us.
Nice.
Molding.
They are nice t-shirts.
Like if you're on camera, but it's, what size?
If you ordered one and you haven't picked it up, Elizabeth has them. And she'll be reaching out to you.
And it will be sent for sale, okay?
National Light Out, which was the third thing we kind of talked about in Neighborhood Watch, was the, some of the prep and the thoughts from the Neighborhood Watch entity and how they were gonna be involved at National Light Out, which I'll talk about just a little bit. And, well, again, step on anything you had to discuss. But we've been kind of busy. We had a Valley Views show that'll air on the 30th, right? 30th. So that should be kind of, at least educational. We had a little fun with it too. So it might be one to listen to.
What time of day is that?
It's, it's noon.
It's on all three stations.
Yeah.
At different times?
I didn't bring that with me.
I know the list.
Good. That's a lunch hour.
It is at, maybe on July 31st.
Oh.
At 2:40 PM on KSLB. At 12:40 on KIDN. And at 10:40 AM on KSLB AM, 12:40.
Nice save. Thank you.
12:40.
So I think that was it for me from those two. I'll talk a little bit more about National Light Out in a second. A big part like Forrest and Rob, I'm sure is going to talk a little bit about in some capacity, is gonna be stampede. We've had a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions. And I think the biggest thing that we want everybody to know, this is a pretty collaborative effort, multi-agency response, multi-department response. And there, there's a lot going on, a lot of moving parts. And I think in the future, we want to have probably some sort of study session with you to kind of decide what that impact, what that really impact looks like. And we talked about a cost accounting look. We talked about a manpower look, however that goes. But I think you'd be need to kind of get, and I know you've been on the committee and you probably have a top-down look too. So that would be helpful as well, to have a real thorough look on how that whole thing works. A second piece is Sherman Avenue. We're looking at a little bit, something a little bit different. We wanted you to be aware of it. I've talked to commissioners through the fire chief, the actual fire chief. And he, he brought it to the commissioners. And we're gonna do a partial soft close of Sherman Avenue after the concert. It's just too crowded, too congested. It turns into a 25, I think, starting Tuesday, according to Mr. Sullivan. But I do think we need to take that a step further after the concert. So with the help of CSP and us and some barricades and some other things, we're literally gonna block it off. And we're not gonna stop traffic for long periods of time. But we're gonna make sure that people, people traverse and cars exit in some sort of controlled manner. It's something that the sheriff had some, some personal thoughts about. I questioned him when I saw it. And to be honest, everybody I've talked to thinks it's a good idea. It's just a little bit of an unknown. And we pulled it off kind of in the last minute. So we'll see how it goes this year. We might try to improve upon that. Because most people may not even realize that it's 45 from there. And I think that seems a little odd to me. So that might be something long-term we try to get fixed as well, considering our parking and our venue are separated by 45 mile an hour roads. Now, we changed that to for that time, but still habit. We're creatures. And that's, that's a little scary to me to say, you know, two days, we're gonna change that habit to people that drive that road all the time. The last thing is parking. And this is a plea to everyone. The parade route, which includes first, two, day Dunham to second and back basically to Jefferson, from Jefferson all, you know, the big loop, is no parking during the times, basically of eight to 12 in the morning, both days, Friday and Saturday, the 27th and the 28th. So our plea is, we don't want to tow cars. We really don't want to do that. We're trying to get ahead of it. But it's extremely dangerous. And it's, it's coupled by the fact of how people park outside of that zone. They literally tie us into using the parade route as a response. They literally tie us into using the parade route as a response zone. So we will have absolutely no tolerance for cars left there during that time. So I don't know how to, to, to beg or plead with people to please not park there, get them out of there. At least by nine, we'd like to see them out of there by eight before we have to start making moves, especially on those, I think Dunham especially, Second especially, and then anything in the kind of the downtown corridor is gonna be a really big deal. For safety for everyone, not just the parade, but if, if, we literally have first responders in the parade and if they have to respond, they have to be able to get out. And if we're, if it's one line of a parade, we're not gonna be able to do that. And the, and the roads north and south are all packed with cars and, and parade goers and all that, so for safety.
We'd also like to ask the public not to park on Prospect, cause that is a detour route. That detour route carries the entire volume of Highway 160 and US 285 during the parade. So if people could really try not to park on Prospect, it would really help the detour move.
Thank you for reminding me. So that's kind of a Stampede update from the 30,000 foot view with a little bit of plea for, for some help from the public. I am also accepting volunteers, this is the kind of the last minute, we could use some volunteers for road closures, assistance with traffic movement. And if anybody would be willing or able to do that, see Rob or I, or we can put out our phone numbers, you know how to contact us. We'll have a briefing right before, we'll, we'll kinda take care of it, it won't be difficult duty, you'll be paired with a city worker or, or police officer, both city workers. So it won't be like we'll just stick you on a corner and say, hey, make sure nobody goes through here. You might be watching our back kinda thing is what, is what it would be, and it'd be very helpful for us. So if anybody's interested in that, please see us or city manager, we'll, we'll get you to the right spot. And then the last, I'm sorry, I saw your hand go. The last thing is National Night Out, and I, I don't have a lot more to talk about this, cause we've been talking about it so much. Other than to say that it's really kinda come to fruition, we are ready. The food is ordered, the games are ready, the, the bling is, is here, and we're ready to have some fun. And we'd like to invite council to be there. We will have a dunk tank, I'd like to invite the mayor to participate with that, with, in that with me. I think we're gonna charge for that, so just so you know.
And I think as mayor, I can appoint.
I think you could delegate, you could appoint. He's gotta run the city while he's away. And I think that's kinda what I, all I really wanted to say about National Night In Edition, you can fill in the holes, cause you're really good. So it is the 7th of August and it will start at 5:30 and run until 8 officially. We'll have setup before that, tear down afterwards, but it should be just a lot of fun. Just about every event we had planned is, we've been able to get, get going. All first responders, lots of events and excitement for kids, plenty of food, just about everything you can think of. Yeah, across, so all 50 states have turned into the National Association of Neighborhood Watch. But it's, it's just an organization that kinda sponsors not Neighborhood Watch, but National Night Out, so they're, they kinda work in conjunction. And they did a survey and most of us who have responded, she, they calculated some, some, kind of some ideas on what kinda numbers. And they have all 50 states, 16,500 communities, and 38 million people will be doing the same thing on Tuesday night. And so that's pretty cool and we're part of it, and hopefully we can get, we're hoping for 200 to 300 people in the park. And it truly is a meet your neighbor, community event, and hopefully we can kinda take a little bit of momentum into the next year.
And where was this meeting at again?
Chapman Park, sorry.
From 5:30 to 8, and there's gonna be a professional photographer and there's gonna be drone and.
Bouncy house, some face painting, wet officials.
Did you say you wanted to be in that?
No, no, I didn't say that at all. I don't think either of us said that.
Alright, statistics, on to the serious stuff. June, pretty typical, I mean, we were just, we're on pace, not where I wanted to be, but I was talking to Forrest about it and I've, I really think that there's a couple factors at work here that are good, but they're not making exactly the, the decreases in percentages that I hope. And one of those factors is, I'm really encouraging officers to take reports. I think there was a tradition here that unless the victim demanded or the situation demanded based on some sort of crime that was prosecuted by the state or, you know, however, they typically didn't take a report. I think that's a complete mistake, you know, we, our job is to report that crime. How the victim chooses to, to, to go forward is different, you know, we can have a lack of prosecution, we can have, you know, an inability to solve it. But it still should be reported and documented. So we're, we're staying flat while I see the types of crimes going down in some respects, but not in the draw numbers. They're just, they're just not, they're not the same thing. But what is, what does seem to be kinda changing is how we're classifying. And if you look at your report, the right-hand side is clearance, that was completely blank last year, every category. And that leads me, my second issue is reporting, what are we classifying things, how consistent are we being? Do we have the policies that now say this is the, the crime and this is what it'll be reported as? As opposed to whatever the officer felt like calling at the time. The first degree criminal trespass is the official crime of breaking into somebody's car and stealing something. Well, theft from a vehicle is also a crime. Well, unless you have done this a little while, you're like, what is the difference in that? So that's kinda the problem, we have different reportings, one's a felony, one can only be a felony if they steal enough stuff off of the car. But it's, it's, those are the kinda reporting issues that we're trying to fix, and on top of that, what are we doing about them? Well, a lot of those are 100%, that's a clearance rate, that means every crime that came in, we saw. Every crime that we know about or we took a report on, we saw. That's not true in every case, but if you look at the very last number on the back page, which fortunately I couldn't get it on the front page. 75% clearance rate overall for the department is really good. That can vary greatly, but that's, that's very good considering that's all crimes included. So anyway, any questions on the stats? It's been a strange week as far as officer go. So I lost an officer today, he was promoted chief of center. That's kind of a good thing, you know, it's not a bad thing. Tristan Benzalanga will finish his last day here, I think it's on the 1st, will be his last working day. Turned his resignation today, I think 4th is technically the last day of paper, 8th. The second officer got hurt at home, but it carries over to us, so that's kinda hurting us a little bit. And then we have the chief of police in our neighbor in Alamosa just left. So there could be some mix-up in this whole valley, but things are moving around. Cops are fickle animals, you know, they, they do, we do what we do and so it's, it's been an interesting week. Officer Cisneros is on his own and doing great, so that's a positive. And Officer Valdez, our valedictorian, our fire plug, little guy is, is doing amazing, he's gonna come on strong. I think he's excited, he likes it, he's learned a lot and, and he knows a lot already, he knows a lot of people. I had a really long talk with him yesterday about a crime, we got him to kinda look at things differently, he was just a sponge, it was, it was really nice. It was a good conversation. So I go from everything looks good, we're full to, you know, that's how, it's just non-stop. So some of that will be discussed in the budget as well and some of the, the concepts of how to get ahead of that. You know as well as I do, the lifetime of hiring anyone is not fun. Lifetime of hiring an officer is ridiculous, and, and I don't mean that in a negative way, it's just very unfortunate. We, we ran a process, we had our best turnout, our best scores, and we hired no one. That's how it goes, you know, I, I didn't feel comfortable, they didn't pass things, all things properly. But some of our highest scores on the oral board, some of our best candidates on paper, and none of them are working for us. So it's a tricky, it's a tricky deal. I can tell you, our city attorney would be the first to say that's an important step in, in having a department is hiring. Cause it's, it's much easier to get the right people on the bus than it is to get the wrong ones off, much, so it's, and it's very, it takes a lot of discipline, because it, it, it hurts to see, you know, how short we can be and you got a guy right there that, eh, he might be able to do the job. No, it's just not, there's no maybes, it can't be a might. Grants, so we kinda had a good year so far, we're about $45,000 in the, in the positive for grants. About 23,000, I think, thousand, I didn't put all the, the breakdown here, is our C.DOT officer overtime, which is such a double-edged benefit, it really packs a lot of punch, cause we can put an officer on the street for significant more pay and it's basically like having another officer out there. They, they, they're supposed to focus on seatbelt and DUI enforcement, but the reality is, you know, when, when the proverbial stuff hits the fan, it's still another officer there, it's still another show of presence, and when you're talking about DUIs and seatbelts, you know, other than what I saw on the TV the other day about opioids, those used to be, you know, the number one killers. Well, now it's opioids, according to the thing I saw on TV. The second one's Post, it's a $4,600 grant for training equipment. El Pomar, you know about the dog, the $15,000 there and how well that's turning out. And then SLB Training just gave us a $3,000 computer, TV kinda training monitor. This concept, but yet in a laptop TV package that we can roll throughout the police department, could technically enroll it over here. Really cool, kind of a last-minute deal that they had some money, that, that, that money comes from Post as well. So Post has really kinda stepped up over the years and has become really a, a good entity, has kinda taken policing into the, the really professional level across the country and, and Colorado's right there with them. And then Walmart, I don't know, I have a pending grant that I think I'm in line for, but you won't know until the, you know, to the last minute. But it's for furniture in the police department. It's for just over $5,000 worth of tables, chairs, to kinda try to upgrade our crooked, rickety stuff that we have. Which leads to building improvements, really happy, if you look out the window, you don't see a single cobweb, do you? That's pretty cool. The birds, we're still working on the birds, but I don't know exactly what the city manager and Rob have done, but thank you. It's, it's showing and we've gotten some other things working that I don't know I'm gonna bore you with, but it had come up in some of your election stuff and some of the fact that that's a, for, for me, a real morale thing. It, it's part of my recruiting, retention and hiring, and I think that's, I need that, and we're getting there, so thank you. The last two are kinda, they're kinda near and dear to heart, so we talked about maybe kinda give a little money to Crime Stoppers and I'm, I'm still asking for that. But one even more important to me personally is the Colorado Fallen Hero Foundation. And I can't do it a lot of justice, but I really encourage you to go onto their website. This group, the, the leader of this group is Chief Nick Metz, he came from Seattle, he's now the Aurora Chief of Police. He's an amazing man and he, he's, he's instituted a foundation basically that will respond anywhere in the state at a moment's notice with, with a crew of, of trained officers and civilian staff that will literally swoop in and handle a death, an officer-involved death. And to put that into perspective, you, you have to kinda know what this looks like, you know, a funeral for an officer can be a thousand cars. It can be 4,000 people, it can be $10,000, it can, on and on and on. There's no way my department and the city could handle that, it's just not gonna happen. I never hoped that on us, but I, I know that there's an option and this is an amazing option. And a donation to them would be very meaningful to me and the system. So keep that in mind, it's kinda like hazmat, you don't need it until you need it, unless you do that, that insurance investment.
Can you tell me what that was again?
So it's the Colorado Fallen Hero Foundation. And there's several out there, but that's Colorado's, so if you kinda start looking, it's not just us, there's a lot of them out there. I was in, I was involved with it when it kind of in its infancy, when I left the metro area, boy, it was just really taking and running with it. The captain involved with it, I'm pretty close friends with him, he's in, he's a really good guy and he, he'd take his crew and they just, they literally come swooping in and the only thing they ask from us is kinda do a little preparatory work. Decide who is gonna be the contact, where can we stay, how do we get food, and what does the family want? It's, I mean, it's that simple, it's really cool. And, and they're here for the family, and they'll put us in our place to do that, cause that's what they're here for, to take care of the family. So obviously this is a nasty situation to have happen in any community, but they would do it throughout the valley. So I'm gonna try to pitch this throughout the valley, because the valley would struggle alone. You know, any agency and even us as a group trying to come together, it, it's, it's bigger than any critical incident, you know, that you can imagine. It would be like planning some sort of, of, of MASH casualty incident, it's, it's the same kinda concept. Trying to put together a funeral of that size, depending on the person. It could even be bigger, I mean, I've seen funerals of 5,000 cars, you know, that just, where do you put 5,000 cars? It's a lot, so it's a big deal. And then my advisory committee, it's been, I don't know how much I've really made this public or, or to the council, but I have a pretty amazing advisory committee, several people are here tonight and I thank them for being involved. And one of the things that I, I specifically wanted from them is what the top five things that they thought I should do or at least consider. And I did, I did very little guiding, other than giving them kind of the, the understanding of what, answering questions that they needed to help make those decisions. And I'm, part of my budget is gonna be focused on those five things. And I just kinda wanted you guys to know that there's a bigger group kinda behind that, there's actually 12 of us. I think we've averaged eight or 10 showing up at the meetings, but that's why it's kinda big is, you know, just like you know, it's nice to have as many people out there to, to directly, to interact with and, and get comments. So it's been, it's been exciting and I think, I think they've been very helpful and they've helped, I think, both ways. I've been able to kinda educate them and they've been able to, to kinda help guide me based on what they think's important here. And a big part of my budget and my request for next year's plans will be, will be their input. And I just kinda wanted to pre, pre, prepare you for that concept. And lastly, Mr. Porter. So I wanna do two things, one, I wanna introduce him in his own words here. Cause he'll probably stutter and sound all goofy, so I wanna do a. Is that they got my phone on the wrong page here? Okay. I'm a 35-year-old man from Charlotte, North Carolina. I graduated Central Gabarus High School, class of 2003, and played baseball all four years at my high school. I played third base and left field. I've worked four years as an armed security guard for Concord Regional Airport and a certified diesel mechanic. I'm an avid hunter and outdoorsman and I love Major League Baseball and NASCAR racing. I relocated to Montevista three weeks ago and I'm really enjoying the city so far. Thanks for this opportunity and I really look forward to doing my job and serving the community and the city of Montevista. So with that, within three days, I get, I would really like to thank our new code enforcement officer from Montevista today. In only his third day, he's catching up on some of the things that have been overlooked and missed in the past. After speaking with him, less than 24 hours later, a tree, she says the tree, had, that she had been having trouble with, completely blocking out her streetlight, is now trimmed back and completely devoid of any problems, so it's shining nice and brightly. She says, "Thank you for your hard work, Shane Porter, and keep it up, we have faith in you." That's pretty quick, he's fallen in his predecessor's footsteps pretty quickly. So I'd like to introduce Shane Porter. We didn't swear him in, cause he's, he doesn't quite fit the uniforms, we had to order and you know how that goes. Next council will do the official thing, and that's all I have.
I apologize for not having a written report to, for you tonight. I guess the reason I hadn't do it, we're pretty much simple as far as what we're doing, most of our time has been spent on stampede. So that means we're out painting curbs, weed eating around all the, everything that's in the right of way, especially around the, the parade route and along the detour route, checking signs to make sure that they're visible, just kinda doing that. I've done a little bit of more work on the memorial park, we got all the benches installed, the shade structures are installed. installed, the shade structures are installed, the five flag poles that technically aren't part of our grant, but was a community service project for both Public Works and REC, we would have had and got those put in, and we'll be putting the flags up prior to stampede to get those on. The only two items that remain until that park is complete will be the fencing, which is on order, and it should be in within, hopefully, the next two weeks, and the granite benches, which John Glass of Value Monument is doing the final engraving on those, and hopefully after stampede, first part of August, we'll get those set. So we're moving right along, still going to be within our September twenty-seventh deadline. I also did contact a professional landscaper to try to help us out restoring that grass and getting it green again, so we're trying to get that all tidied up. Been working with both Excel and CDOT on their projects, trying to get things cleaned up and, so they don't impede stampede, so it always seems that people want to work during stampede, so we're working on that. Really, other than that, I got to give a big shout-out to my entire crew, who have stepped things up immensely, and have just been little bumblebees all over the town, just working and getting things ready, so I really appreciate the work that they do. So, and any questions you may have? Keep it short and sweet, then. All right? Thank you, council.
Thank you, Rob.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. You have IT's written report before you, I'd like to point out a couple of things quickly on it for you. We, IT is continuing to provide textbooks to the city of Montevista, donations from the city of Alamosa. We currently have two now in service here, those terminals are valued at five thousand dollars apiece, that including the docks and the power supplies and everything. So it's a, right now, it's a ten thousand dollar value we have in place, we anticipate another two of those terminals coming over this year still. So, and, and next year will be another, I believe we have five scheduled for next year to come over. So it won't be too much longer before we have a terminal in every police car at no direct expense to the city. Yeah, it's, it's working out pretty well, and in return, the police department has taken some of their workstations that were the newer workstations we put in last year, and they've moved those into the five-year replacement plan for the rest of the city, so the rest of the city's budgeting is seeing a relief of buying new computer systems for the next few years. So it, it's a trickle-down effect, and it's working pretty well. Another one I wanted to comment on in my report, Kids Connection, we ordered a camera system, we have that, we got it in, we installed it, got it configured and working, so that is now completely covered by cameras.
Awesome.
I know that was a big concern, so we wanted to get that as quickly as we could. Pretty much all the rest of our report's routine, except for the big thing on our report, is on June sixteenth, celebrated two years of IT being here, working through the IGA with the city of Alamosa. And for those of you that are unfamiliar with that, there's an intergovernmental agreement that the city of Montevista pays the city of Alamosa a fee that is equivalent to, to help pay for two technicians and a director, it's supposed to work out to be eighty percent, or, I'm sorry, seventy percent of a technician one's time, twenty percent of a technician's two's time, and ten percent of the director. We feel like we end up here quite a bit more than that amount of time, even though they don't necessarily see us all the time, we're, we're here working for the city at all times, we're monitoring everything at all times. In that time period, I put a spreadsheet in your packet, it has a mistake in it, and I'd like to give you an updated copy of that, if I may. With automated fields and spreadsheet comes automated mistakes. So, in that two-year period, these are direct expenses that we can show you in any way you'd like to see, of saving costs to the city of Montevista. So in here, you'll see donated equipment from the city of Alamosa, you'll see where our combined buying power has enabled us to realize savings when we're buying, and retail costs of the equipment, retail cost of the man-hours that we, we estimate we've put in. And in two years, you'll see the bottom line comes down to a six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-dollar savings to the city of Montevista for the services we provide.
That's pretty wild.
And that's the first two years, we have one more year on this agreement, and then we'll revisit it that time, renewing that agreement. It's worked out pretty well, because with the amount of money that you pay the city of Alamosa, which is roughly fifty-two, fifty-two thousand a year, city of Alamosa hires that third technician and enables us to work as a team to, to do everything for both cities.
That's great.
Very impressive.
It sometimes feels like a lot of work, but we enjoy it, we enjoy getting in here and doing everything to secure your system. When we first got here, we had a police department computer that had over three hundred confirmed viruses on it. We, we've stabilized your entire network, we've cleaned the entire network, and short of occasional screen grab, we've had no confirmed viruses in two years. So it, it's really been a challenge for us, it's great for us, we don't get to practice those kind of skills very often, and we've really enjoyed doing that for you.
Thank you.
We do appreciate having you guys here, that's for sure.
One of the testimonies to must be doing something right, is that we don't hear from much. IT is, we don't want to know.
Nobody wants to see us, you know, the nerd's in the back corner, just leave us back there.
And things have been working, and now you're saying, you know, that's, that's, that's a great calculation, I appreciate it.
And, and we keep that running, so you'll, at any time, you can ask us to see that, and we can produce that for you. But it seems to be running smooth, like I said, the whole system seems to be very secure right now, we're very touchy about what touches our network, and we are working with Forrest right now to work on a public access system that would be totally physically separated from your business network, and, and then provide some Wi-Fi access to the public and that at the same time, so that's coming soon. Maybe even some of it by our night out, we're looking at, it looks like that might actually happen, so. That's all from IT, do you have any questions for me? Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Crime Stoppers, I'd like to thank Chief Rose Crans, because he has been instrumental in reviving that for this, for us, for the entire San Luis Valley. It had kind of fallen apart, become inactive, and he kind of stepped in, stepped in and felt that was an important element to add to Neighborhood Watch and, and the crime-riding capabilities, really for the whole valley, and so that was exciting to attend that meeting the other night, and there were peoples, several people from Montevista, there was people from Alamosa, the police chief from South Fork was here, and I think there's a huge energy there to, to make that happen and grow and be successful and add to what's already happening, and I think Chief Rose Crans really has been instrumental in that. So, thank you, sir. And Neighborhood Watch National Night Out, the T-shirts are in, if you haven't picked up your T-shirt, Elizabeth Shank has those, and we can get you her number, or anyone can get you in touch with her. One thing that came to mind that we haven't talked about, I was visiting with another Neighborhood Watch person, and they said, you know, really, especially for Stampede, we really need to talk up the idea of lights on again, because I think during the summer, some of that goes by the wayside, and with the number of people in Montevista, people milling around, that the more lights we can get on for that weekend in your backyard, go put a string of white Christmas lights in your front yard, just add some more lights so that our officers and the law enforcement agencies that are helping out, you know, have more visibility to see, see what's happening.